No, no. Hi HPD, thank you for being here, and DOF, and DOB. So, good afternoon. I won't repeat all of the testimony, all of my opening statement that I've already read, but I do want to acknowledge the council members present, Councilmember Marte, Hanif, Aviles, Hudson, Holden, Feliz, and Carr. Sorry, and Councilmember Kagan. So, to continue, while these programs provide the city with one of the most robust set of enforcement tools in the state of New York, their efficiency is unknown and perhaps insufficient, either in actual operations of the program, the overall cohesiveness in the way that they work together, or in the recovery of fines and fees. There are evidently points we need to address in ensuring the city's housing maintenance code, and when it is not enforced, ensuring landlords are held accountable, given the severity of the issues at hand. Today, we will assess tools at the city's disposal for enforcing our housing maintenance code and hold those accountable who in bad faith consistently ignore the stipulations thereof. I'll touch on these programs briefly, but at today's hearing, I want to go beyond the basic facts about the program. It is essential for the committee to carry out its oversight functions to learn whether these programs are working, and ways that we can work together to improve them, all with the aim of making sure that New Yorkers feel safer in their homes. To begin, 7A. 7A allows judges in housing court to appoint property administrators when owners of a property have effectively abandoned their property, and the conditions of the property are dangerous to the life, health, and safety of the tenants. In fiscal year 20, 40 units were discharged from the 7A program or were in compliance with a 7A consent order, 23 in fiscal year 21, and 34 in fiscal year 22. I hope to hear from the administration about the success and state of the buildings in this program, under which circumstances HPD requests a 7A administrator, and how a building can successfully exit the program. Alternative enforcement. The alternative enforcement program requires HPD to perform frequent inspection to a select number of buildings in the city of New York, track correction of violations, issue orders to correct if the owner fails to act, and make repairs as necessary. In fiscal year 20, there were 1,256 units discharged from the alternative enforcement program as a result of owner compliance, 6,484 units in fiscal 21, 4,135 in fiscal 22. Our data shows that 386 buildings have gone through the alternative enforcement program more than once. If a building has gone through AEP once and somehow becomes eligible to enter it again, we need to revisit the alternative enforcement program to see, are there property owners who are repeatedly failing to properly maintain their buildings at the expense of the safety of the tenants? The certificate of no harassment program. Local law 1 of 2018 established a pilot program requiring owners of certain buildings to obtain a certification of no harassment before filing for permits at the Department of Buildings to perform certain construction work. The CONH program aims to ensure that buildings do not harass tenants when they seek to conduct alterations or demolition work. What is unclear is how many certifications of no harassment have been issued since the pilot program began, and whether the program has increased or decreased the number of harassment complaints from tenants. Emergency repair. HPD has the power to intervene and correct emergency violations via the emergency repair program when a property owner fails to act. There were 363,480 dwelling units in fiscal 20 that had emergency work completed under ERP, but only 40,547 units in 21 and 42,039 units in 22, likely because of the pandemic, I'm sure we'll hear. Further, our data shows multiple dwellings, multiple buildings undergoing ERP a few times, with one building going through the program 80 times. Further, I'm concerned with owners' abuse of this program in their efforts to shirk their responsibilities to tenants. I'm interested to hearing from the administration how the fees associated with the emergency repair program, how many go unpaid, and how many become liens against the property with both HPD and DOF's enforcement protocols during these procedures. HPD's latest report on the alternative enforcement program shows that over $100 million, including interest, has been recouped through the program. Of this, 40 million were ERP charges, 53 million were AEP charges, 18 million of those for system replacement, and 35 million for emergency repairs and utilities. I'm interested in the total amount of charges imposed in addition to these recouped by the department. I'm interested also in understanding the collection rate of fees over the last several years and how HPD has improved collection overall. HPD and DOF. In 2019, the New York State Controller selected a sample of 25 complaint cases that resulted in notices of violation issued by the agency during the last two fiscal years, ending in June 2019. And of the 25 cases, four were dismissed after owners corrected the violations, and 21 were referred to housing court. When does HPD pursue litigation versus other alternatives available to the department? There are, I won't go through all of them, because I know that the administration will, but there are other programs that the administration has access to. And in some, we want to look at each of these programs today and understand how the administration measures success. With respect to the legislation that we will be hearing today, I'll pass the mic to my colleagues to speak on the bills that they are having heard. And just to speak on my own, I alongside nine councilmembers from the highest, the districts with the highest rates of complaints, introduced intro number 204, which would raise the inspection fees for repeat inspections as time and time again, heat and hot water complaints go unaddressed. I'm also sponsoring intro number 434, which seeks to expand the heat sensor program. The heat sensor program has proven to have some success since its adoption in the pilot phase, and it's worth expanding. We will also take a look at how the pilot program has fared and what we can do to expand and make it more effective. Intro number 163, sponsored by Councilmember Holden, relates to the photographic documentation evidencing certain violations enforced by HPD. Intro number 484 is sponsored by Councilmember Marte, which is the DOB analog to 163. Intro number 243 is sponsored by Councilmember Hanif relating to multiple dwelling owners being required to post notices regarding electric space heater safety. Intro number 337 is sponsored by Councilmember Hudson relating to HPD providing annual list of open housing maintenance code violations to multiple dwelling occupants and tenants. And finally, 583, which is sponsored by the Public Advocate, who could not join us today, relating to an increase in penalties for violations issued by HPD and requiring HPD to maintain a certification of correction watch list and prohibiting any listed landlord from certifying correction of violations in multiple dwellings without an inspection. I would like to thank my team, Sam Cardenas, my chief of staff, Kadim Robinson, our legislative and communications director, as well as the Housing and Buildings Committee staff, Audrey Sun, Taylor Zaloni, Jose Conde, Charles Kim, Dan Croup, and a special shout out on this hearing to our data scientist, Brooke Fry, who spent many, many hours analyzing open data records. And with that, thanks everyone again for being here today. I want to turn it over to my colleagues to make introductions about their bills. So first up, Councilmember Marte.
First of all, I want to thank Chair Sanchez for having this hearing and bringing this piece of legislation into the agenda. I also want to thank my legislative director, Ian Wong, and Rachel Cardaro from central staff for making this bill possible. Intro 484 will require Department of Buildings inspector to take photos when they respond to tenants' complaint and issue violations. Right now, too often, I often receive calls and emails from constituents telling my staff that they still have their apartment issue unsolved despite multiple DOB inspections. They are unsure if the inspector even went into their building or spotted the correct conditions for repairs before closing the ticket prematurely. This bill intends to address this issue and brings more transparency and accountability to New York City tenants by requiring photographic evidence and maintaining such records, so that public and local elected officials have the ability to make sure that DOB inspectors actually conduct the inspection and the job they're set out to do before closing any ticket. This is about bringing DOB and inspector into the 21st century. Right now, especially during the holiday season, anytime you receive a package and they leave it at your doorstep, a UPS FedEx worker takes a photo. We all have smartphones. Even the instruments that many of these inspectors hold, whether it's an iPad or another tablet, have the ability to take photos. There's no reason why we shouldn't have this in New York City. We are mindful that this law does not add any additional burden or poses any challenges for DOB inspectors to conduct their job. Our office will continue to partner with the department and the commissioner to coordinate further rulemaking to ensure smooth implementation of this law. Thank you again, Chair, for allowing us to have this hearing.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Marte. I next want to pass it to Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez, and the Committee on Housing and Buildings for hosting this critical hearing. I deeply appreciate you including intro 243A on today's agenda. Electric space heaters are one of the leading causes of fires. According to the Consumer Product Safety Commission, portable heaters are involved in about 1,700 fires per year nationwide, resulting in about 80 deaths and 160 injuries. The tragic Twin Parks Fire in Councilmember Feliz's district in January of this year showed how devastating these fires can be. Unfortunately, we know we cannot eliminate space heater usage in our city. While landlords have an obligation to their tenants to provide adequate heating, this obligation is often not met, and residents are forced to resort to using heaters to stay warm. Earlier this year, the council passed my bill, Local Law 64 of 2022, which prohibited space heaters without necessary safety features from being sold in our state. Intro 243A, which is being heard today, builds off of this legislation by making sure tenants know how to use space heaters safely. If passed, this bill would require building owners to conspicuously post an informational notice on how to properly operate a space heater. The notice would need to include the recommendations: 1. Purchasing an electric space heater with the seal of a qualified testing laboratory, such as Underwriters Laboratories, Inc. 2. Choosing a heater with a thermostat and overheat protection, including tip-over, automatic shut-off functionality. 3. Operating the heater at least three feet away from anything flammable. 4. Operating the heater only on a solid, flat surface. 5. Keeping the heater away from heavily trafficked areas in the dwelling. 6. Never blocking a dwelling exit. 7. Keeping children and pets away from the heater. 8. Plugging the heater directly into the wall outlet and never using an extension cord or surge protector. 9. Turning off and unplugging the heater when leaving a room or going to sleep. And 10. Additional recommendations issued by the department. Since the bill was introduced, I've added amendments with the assistance of the Great Housing and Buildings Committee staff, Taylor Zaloni and Audrey Sun, to better ensure that our immigrant communities are able to receive this notice in the languages they speak. The A version being heard today ensures that the notice will be available in the 10 designated citywide languages, as well as additional languages. This legislation is a common sense approach that will reduce risk and save lives. I appreciate the sponsorship of this bill from 20 of my colleagues and strongly encourage others to sign on and for the council to pass it expeditiously. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hanif. We'll next go to Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez, and good afternoon. Today, the Committee on Housing and Buildings will hear my bill, introduction 337, which would require the Department of Housing Preservation and Development to compile and distribute by mail to tenants or occupants of a multiple dwelling a list of any unresolved violations of the housing maintenance code for such dwelling once a year. I introduced this bill after speaking with countless tenants who reached out to my office because their landlord failed to address the myriad violations in their units, similarly to Chair Sanchez and the constituent cases that she's referenced. These tenants wanted evidence to prove unaddressed violations and to be able to use such evidence as leverage to force their landlords to fix these issues as quickly as possible, and this bill does just that. Further, we need to arm tenants with the tools they need to fight against excessive rent increases by greedy landlords. One way to fight the rampant displacement we've seen in my district is for longtime tenants to be able to negotiate lease renewals with their landlords in a way that mitigates high rent increases. Being equipped with outstanding housing maintenance code violations in their unit would allow tenants to fight back against attempted unjustified rent hikes. While this information is readily available on the city's open data and HP's building registration and violation portals, most New Yorkers know neither about the existence of these sources nor how to use them. Though we should, of course, continue investing in making our city's data more accessible for all, we should also provide this data proactively in a digestible, easy-to-understand format. And I want to say thank you to Chris Pepe for drafting this bill, as well as to my chief of staff, Casey Addison, and my Director of Policy and Budget Initiatives, Andrew Wright. And thank you again, Chair Sanchez.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hudson, and I hope you feel better soon. We'll next go to Councilmember Bob Holden.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez, for hosting this hearing today, all the great bills that are being heard, and of course, including my bill, intro 163. Intro 163 would require the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, to submit photographic documentation when issuing a notice of violation. HPD would also be required to publish a list of violations subject to this requirement on its website. We certainly need transparency and consistency when any government agency issues a violation. My bill would make it easier for building owners and tenants to understand why they are receiving a violation and what has to be done to remedy the situation. Again, I want to thank the cosponsors of this bill and all the bills that are being heard today, the sponsors, and look forward to hearing testimony today from HPD and the public. And again, thank you, Chair Sanchez.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holden. I'll now turn it over to our committee counsel to administer the oath.
We will now take testimony from the administration. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Excuse my voice, I'm recovering also from a little respiratory. Good afternoon, Chair Sanchez, and members of the Housing and Buildings Committee. My name is Anne Marie Santiago, and I am the Deputy Commissioner of the Office of Enforcement and Neighborhood Services at the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. I am accompanied today by the leadership of the enforcement team, Marty Weithman, Assistant Commissioner of the Housing Litigation Division, Grace Dufina, Assistant Commissioner of the Division of Special Enforcement, Joshua Cuciaro, Assistant Commissioner of the Emergency Operations Division, and Renee P. A., Assistant Commissioner of the Division of Neighborhood Preservation. Mario Farigno, Assistant Commissioner of the Division of Code Enforcement, and Angela Robinson, Assistant Commissioner of our Administration and Internal Compliance Division, unfortunately could not be with us today. Thank you for the invitation to testify on our enforcement of the housing maintenance code and several bills proposed by the city council related to our enforcement of that code. The mission of the Office of Enforcement and Neighborhood Services, which we share with the council, is to protect the quality of housing for all New Yorkers. Each of us here today represent a dedicated team, a field and office staff, who worked throughout COVID to keep New Yorkers safe, conducting inspections in response to complaints, re-inspecting open violations, both to ensure that building records reflect repairs, and to ensure that landlords who did not make repairs continue to be held accountable for those conditions, seeking enforcement of orders and educating owners. We continue to provide our basic services, such as restoring heat when property owners were unable to or refused to do so. At the same time, we implemented a number of new laws, rules, and common sense procedures designed to improve the safety for our families and protect tenants from harassment. We continue to find new and innovative ways to fulfill our mission despite the challenges faced by all city agencies over the past three years. I know that all of you have interacted with our services on behalf of your constituents over the past year, but I would like to share some important statistics and highlights from the past three years to bring some context to our work. In fiscal year 2022, code enforcement received 580,000 complaints and conducted over 700,000 inspections and re-inspections of existing violations. For code enforcement activity specifically, almost $1 million in inspection fees was assessed and billed to properties through their property taxes. We implemented multiple changes regarding lead-based paint that expanded the number of households protected by our lead-based paint laws, including more audits and the issuance of violations for lead paint hazards at lower levels of lead in paint. We enhanced our work around fire safety, implementing new laws, posting a new multi-language notice whenever we issue a self-closing door violation in a building, sending more details about how to ensure that self-closing doors are working properly, in owner and tenant notices that are mailed after a violation is issued, and educating owners on the need for fire safety notices in each apartment. Overall, during fiscal year 22, we completed emergency repairs that affected more than 42,000 apartments, restoring heat, addressing lead or mold, repairing self-closing doors, and fixing collapsing ceilings. We have used all of the tools at our disposal to enforce the code. This calendar year to date, we selected another 250 buildings for the alternative enforcement program. We recently issued underlying condition orders to more than 70 buildings where moles and mold and leaks are systemic. We now have almost 100 buildings in the heat sensor program, and our anti-harassment unit conducted inspections in over 600 buildings. We continue to file cases seeking orders to correct violations and access warrants to the extent possible based on the court's capacity in fiscal year 21 and return to court in person when they reopened last fall. In fiscal year 22, we closed cases which affected over 5,500 dwelling units with orders to correct and civil penalties where warranted. Over 6,1,500 violations were closed through our litigation actions. We obtained orders and civil penalties in cases related to lead-based paint compliance and against owners who have harassed tenants through the deferral of maintenance and deprivation of essential services in buildings across the city. Our litigation activity additionally extends to seeking orders and penalties in heat and hot water cases, obtaining access warrants when property owners refuse our emergency repair program, and working on the certification of no harassment program, including the pilot program which was renewed and expanded by the council last fall. In our efforts to ensure that tenants know their rights and ensure that property owners comply with the law, we have held 11 lead-based paint and mold webinars with almost 2,000 participants. We also conducted over 50 outreach events with the fire department on fire safety issues and with 17 different councilmembers in your districts. We have started using a new customer service technology that allows property owners and tenants to make appointments with our property registration unit and our borough office code enforcement offices to discuss multiple topics. Appointments can be in person, via telephone, or via video conferencing. We have done all of this while making every effort to address our significant staffing challenges, which I mentioned in my testimony earlier this year. We have interviewed over 490 people for our housing inspector, technical field staff, and attorney positions. We have a new class of inspectors starting next week and plan to hold another job fair early in the new year. We are still looking to fill a number of vacancies as well in our housing litigation division and our emergency operations division. Commissioner Carrion has personally trumpeted this need far and wide at all types of events and interviews that he has participated in. HPD has continued to reach out to all types of constituencies who might be interested in working for us, including through expanded social media campaigns. As always, we ask for your support in these recruitment efforts, and we'd be happy to share all job descriptions with you and your colleagues at the council. We fully intend to take advantage of such opportunities in the future. Even given our limited resources at this time, we have plans to improve and expand some of our most important tools and services. In the housing blueprint, we committed to expanding the use of our anti-harassment unit, improving our technology even further to make interacting with the agency easier for tenants and owners, and improving our training to ensure our inspectors, inspections and repairs are conducted by knowledgeable and professional staff. I would be happy to discuss all of these new initiatives with the council as we implement them over the next several years. Especially on the use of technology, I would like to take a minute to let the council know about the implementation of our real-time field force application, which began in 2019 and which continues to expand to more types of inspections and more units within our office. RTFF currently allows our code inspectors working in our borough offices to start their day in the field for complaint inspections, improving productivity and allowing us to respond more quickly and efficiently than when we had to create routes in the office. We have rolled it out slowly, making improvements as we go to streamline our inspection data collection, and are planning to expand to certification re-inspections sometime in 2023. We are planning to improve our public-facing information portal, releasing a new online application to view HPD complaints and violations, improving HPD online in ways we trust will improve our customer service experience obtaining building information. We have continued as well to expand our relationships with other city agencies, working more closely than ever with the Department of Health related to lead, pests, and allergen hazards, as well as working closely with other agencies, including the Department of Buildings, the Fire Department, the Law Department, the Department of Environmental Protection, and most recently, related to the Rat Reduction Initiative, building stronger relationships with the Department of Sanitation. We continue to work with state partners as well, specifically the Attorney General's Office and Homes and Community Renewal on the Tenant Harassment Task Force. In terms of the bills before us today, I want to thank the council for their continued commitment to the tenants and property owners of New York City. We commend and support the goal of targeting agency enforcement to bad actors, including those who repeatedly falsely certify the correction of violations or repeatedly fail to address conditions for which violations are issued. We appreciate legislation that seeks to educate owners or tenants about the dangers that could be present in their homes. And understanding that these are the goals of these bills, we look forward to working on the details of the proposed legislation to ensure they can be implemented in a real and meaningful way. We do have some concerns about the bills to share. For intro 204, we support the billing concept but are not able to charge inspection fees for more than the cost of the service we provide, so we are working to determine the current cost of this service, which we will share with the council. Regarding intro 243, we also support the goal of the bill and would look forward to discussing other ideas for more comprehensive and effective ways to communicate important safety information to tenants. On intro 337, we want to make sure that everyone knows about HPD online, the mechanism in place to provide information quickly and easily to the public. We are certainly open to discussing with the council how to make that information more readily accessible for New Yorkers who don't have internet access. For intro 434, we want to ensure that the program continues to focus on only repeat offenders and does not have the unintended consequence of penalizing owners who address conditions that sometimes arise. We also have concerns around both the increase in staff and technology resources the bill's implementation would require. In addition, issuing violations without first undertaking an inspection of the premises may raise other concerns that are normally addressed when an inspector visits a building, including a census reading may not always reflect an apartment's temperature. The Law Department is reviewing the bill for concerns. Starting to issue violations not based on an inspector's observation is a slippery slope, especially when we are relying instead on technology that can be tampered with by both owners and tenants. But as we evaluate the results of our current heat sensor pilot program, we look forward to further conversations with the council about the most effective ways to address real issues around problem buildings. In regards to intro 583, we support increasing penalties and restricting the privilege of certifications and the deemed complied process, but we need to work with the public advocate and the council on ensuring the process is simple and straightforward. We would also like to discuss some additional amendments that would strengthen HPD's ability to hold bad actors accountable. And finally, for intro 163, HPD is opposed to this proposed legislation as it would require valuable technology resources, and we are not aware of issues related to contesting HPD violations that would be addressed by this bill. We hope to have further conversations around all of these efforts and to work collaboratively with the council to address your concerns so that we can continue to work toward the goal of providing quality housing for all New Yorkers. Thank you, and we would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Deputy Commissioner Santiago. Very thankful for your comprehensive testimony. So, it's almost the holidays, you know, and it should be a happy time for... So, it's almost the holidays, you know, and it should be a happy time for, for New Yorkers, but the, the reality is that, that we know every single year, heat and hot water complaints spike at this time. And, you know, I'm looking over at Councilmember Felice, who just, when we were nine days in office, faced the biggest tragedy that the Bronx has seen in, in decades with the Twin Parks Northwest Fire caused by a space heater. So, the, the first, the first question that I want to ask is, is grounded in that. Heat and hot water complaints, heating in particular, is one of the most pernicious, consistent complaints that we have all across the city. And yet, a heat map of these complaints shows us what we unfortunately expect to see, right? That the, the heat complaint volume is concentrated in the lowest-income communities, communities of color, just time and time again. And so, the, the first question is, just a general one from the perspective of the administration. What efforts has the administration taken and what changes have been made since January of 2022 to address the persistent heat and hot water complaints? Those buildings that are repeat offenders and are receiving, the agency is receiving calls for time and again?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that question. So, one of the ways we have addressed those buildings, right, is of course, as I mentioned, through our technology, we're making efforts to improve the speed at which we can respond to complaints. We do also have in place some processes for identifying buildings that have a particularly high number of complaints, and our Division of Neighborhood Preservation, which we may talk about later, attempts to contact tenants from those buildings, contacts owners, follows up whether or not violations are issued, to try to get a sense of what the conditions are at the building. We do have inspectors in all of our borough offices that respond to the complaints. We also have a team that may go out towards the evening to respond to tenant complaints as well. Of course, we monitor the issuance of heat violations, and we expedite that through our emergency repair program. And we may have time later as well to talk about how that process works, where as soon as the violation is issued, within a very short time period, we are reaching out to the owner, we are reaching out to the tenant. And then, we follow that up with a field staff visit, assuming that the, the temperature is low in the apartment.
Thank you for that. And from your perspective, you, you have inspectors that walk into every single one of these buildings. What is the cause that you can see for why buildings or owners do not provide this heat and hot water? Is it what tenants think, which is just saving money on oil or gas or whatever the case may be? What, what are some of the different causes that you see and how can we address some of those?
I, I'm sure that there are councilmember, property owners who failed to provide the service as a way either to save money, as a way to harass tenants, but I do not believe that that is the majority of the cases. I do believe that there are situations that happen where boilers break down, they're only machines, where fuel deliveries fail to get made because of human error, right? I don't think that the majority of buildings don't provide heat maliciously. I think we took a look at the heat violations that were issued last year, and about seventy-five percent of the buildings that had a heat violation only had one, right? Which would kind of indicate that it is not, for most buildings, it's not that there's a pattern of, of failure to provide heat. And so, you know, we do have the heat sensor program, which we're still evaluating about how effective that is. We do have inspection fees related to properties where he is not adequate multiple times. We can go into housing court, and we do, on those property owners who have multiple heat violations, either over one heat season or over multiple heat seasons.
Do you, so it's helpful to hear that seventy-five percent of violations had only one violation. Do you track the cause of a no heat condition in a building?
We do not, and sometimes we don't know. The inspector is not really a boiler expert. He has to be a generalist or he, or she, and a lot of times, most of the correction is done by the owner before we have to be involved with that correction. And so, we're not in a position to, to say. Obviously, the hardest cases are cases where the boiler just is not working for whatever reason, and those are the ones that often fall to us if there's no owner in the picture, if the owner can't afford to make the repair, and emergency repair needs to be involved. Those are often the hardest ones that we see. But in general, I think, you know, there's no way for us to know what the owner fixed before we got there or what condition was addressed in terms of the, making the repair.
And, so moving to, to the heat sensor program in particular, so there's a pilot program, fifty buildings were chosen in the first year. Of, of those buildings that complied with their selection into the heat sensor program, we did see improvements in the number of complaints that tenants were making and the number of violations issued, certainly over the previous year prior to involvement in the program. So, can you speak to, to how you have seen the success of, success or failure or, or gaps that the program has? And you mentioned that a hundred, a hundred buildings are now in the program because it's fifty a year, second year, that makes sense. But how do buildings exit the heat sensor program?
Thank you, Councilmember, and, and it's good to talk about this program in particular, I think. So, you're right, we did see an improvement in buildings where heat sensors were installed, but we also saw improvement in those buildings where no heat sensor was installed. So, with a very small sample size of fifty, it's hard to make a definitive statement that having the heat sensors reduce the number of violations. I think in some cases, you know, owners were upset about having to install the heat sensors, and actually, in some cases, the owners said, "It's okay that I install the heat sensors because now you know that the heat is adequate." So, it, it kind of was a mixed bag amongst those owners. Not all of the buildings did install the heat sensors as required, and in some cases, we initiated legal action against those owners. The second cohort of buildings was just selected in July, as is required. I think the discharge from that program is very difficult because it requires you to not have had not only heat violations, but violations related to the heat sensors themselves over the period of time. And so, very few buildings have actually been discharged from the program, because especially that first year, although we did a lot of outreach to try to get owners to understand what they had to do, they didn't comply in time, and so, even if they eventually put the sensors in, they had had that violation issued. So, you know, that's something that, that would be great to discuss as kind of an out, outtake strategy for that program, which may have been overlooked in the original legislation. But I think what we really hope to do is look at the second cohort in connection with the first to try to get a better sense. It was also the COVID years, you know, as I referred to them, when that first two-year cohort was in, and that may have also affected both owners' ability to install the sensors and tenants' willingness to have the sensors, quite frankly.
That's, that's helpful. Did it again. That, that is helpful, but I, we don't know what the, what, we would have to do a power analysis to see the, the statistical significance of, of it all, but those buildings that did comply improved more than the buildings that didn't comply. So, you know, more, more to come. Yeah, I agree. I, of course, have, have a million questions, but I, I want to give my colleagues an opportunity before we continue to, before I continue with questions. So first, I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Marte.
No questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
DOB.
Just, well.
Up for DOB.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, there.
So, Councilmember Marte has some questions for DOB.
And Deputy Commissioner, before you give your answer, I'm just going to administer the oath again because I don't think we were able to capture your response earlier. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
And, sorry, just before you begin, I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Dinowitz.
My first question is, are there any obstacles from implementing Intro 484?
Hi, Councilmember, how are you?
Good.
So, we have similar concerns to the, the concerns that HPD raised with Intro 163, and those are primarily technological concerns. So currently, while, while we have the capability to print summons in the field, our inspectors have mobile printers, they don't have the capacity to print photographs in the field. So that's one of our IT concerns. So, so allowing them to do that would require perhaps equipping them with new, new equipment. A secondary concern we have is privacy concerns that we're still discussing internally, but sometimes our inspections involve the interior of, of someone's home, so their bathrooms, bedrooms, and other living spaces. And then finally, one of the additional concerns we had is, how many photos would we, you know, have to include? Sometimes one photo doesn't tell the whole story, so, so we don't want respondents to believe that they only have to correct what's feelable in a photo if it doesn't capture all the violating conditions that we're noting in our summonses. So those are just some of the concerns that we have with the bill.
Do you believe that adding photography and investing in the equipment will increase the efficiency of tickets getting done? Right now, I'm sure all of our offices gets complaints from tenants, even property owners, where DOB inspects, or probably doesn't inspect, but their ticket closes with no change done. Don't you think this is worth the investment for, you know, future generations as well?
So currently, we have our Buildings Information System, so all of our complaints, inspections, and violations, that's all publicly available through, through our website currently. So, I'm not sure what instances you might be referring to where, you know, we closed out a complaint and didn't issue a, a violation. Maybe we didn't see a violating condition when we showed up, so I think I'd like to explore that further with your office.
Finally, have you done any cost estimates of what this might cost if we do move forward with this legislation?
We haven't, but that's something we'd certainly look into.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Marte. So, so coming back, Deputy Commissioner, you mentioned that seventy-five percent of buildings only had one violation. Of course, that leaves us with the twenty-five percent of buildings who are having repeated violations. So, can you, can we touch on a moment on the legislation, Local Law 117, that passed in, I believe, 2020, which is requiring HPD to audit fifteen percent of certificates of correction, and pretty consistently finding that thirty percent of these corrections are false? How, how can that be? And what, what are we doing as a city? What is HPD doing to improve the, the lies? These are, these are folks who are not fixing conditions and saying that they are. What is the agency doing, able to do about it?
If we look at some of those numbers, when we prepare that, and one of the striking things that we know is that those false certifications are happening around pest violations. And so, we have the pandemic, about, you know, the time period really required for correction of a pest violation. The housing mandate currently gives only twenty-one days for that correction. And one of the concerns we have is whether or not that allows enough time to correct before we ask a homeowner to certify that it's actually been done. As, as probably those people know, it takes a number of treatments often if there is a serious pest investigation. So, where does it require that?
So, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was off. So that is one issue that I think that particular group of violations, we need to, to pay a little bit more attention to and think about how to deal with that. I think we do support, as Public Advocate Williams has, some new kind of program to penalize repeat offenders for false certification. I think we have some concerns about the implementation of the program as he designed it in the bill, but we're certainly looking forward to having conversations with him about a way to ensure that once we identify repeat offenders, we can take some action to stop them from continuing to do that and get violations closed. So, that's a conversation that absolutely is on our agenda.
Thank you. And, you know, circling back to heat and hot water, repeat offenders, what are some of the causes that you see that are more common in, in those situations where it's repeat, repeated failures?
Right. And I think there are, again, there are some small minority of property owners who are maybe doing this willingly and purposefully, but some of the things to consider are that a repeat offender could be a heat violation that's issued this week and next week, during which period the owner is still trying to correct the original problem. So that is one. A second is that the repair that's made is actually insufficient, whether the, that's the plumber's mistake in judging how the repair needed to happen, or whether that's the owner trying to not invest what he or she needs to invest in order to repair it properly. So those types of situations do happen. Again, what percentage of that twenty-five percent is in any of those camps, I, I would only be guessing to say.
Would it be possible in certificate, certification of corrections to ask of the owners why, why there was a heat outage, since we don't have that information from the city?
I would have to speak with our, our legal folks to answer that properly, I'm sure, Councilmember. I'm not sure how we define what is required to be in that certification, but that's an idea that we can take back.
Thank you. I want to turn it over to my colleague Councilmember Felice.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. I am Bronx Councilmember Oswald Felice. Thank you, Chair Sanchez, for this hearing, and also thank you to all my colleagues who have bills today. So I have a few questions for HPD. Earlier this year, we had a hearing about, where we talked about our housing laws, enforcement of our housing laws, and also capacity to enforce them. And we talked about how many inspectors HPD currently has and how many inspectors does HPD currently have funding for. And if I remember the numbers correctly, HPD had enough funding for about four-hundred-and-fifty inspectors, if I remember correctly, and it only had about half of that hired, about two-hundred-and-fifty inspectors. So I'm just wondering if we, we've been able to make some progress on that matter. So how many inspectors does current, does HPD currently have?
If you give me one second, I do have that number here. Sorry, so one second, please. Thank you for the question. Okay. Code enforcement. So, we currently have two-hundred-and-fifty-seven inspectors in the field or at our offices, and we have a, a little bit over a hundred vacancies still. And again, as I mentioned to, to the chair at the beginning, we've made incredible efforts this year to try to hire. I believe we had, we've interviewed over five-hundred people for our three most important titles. We're doing everything we can, including bringing on a new class of inspectors next week, doing a job fair in January. We've increased and improved on our outreach through social media, through any events that the commissioner attends, asking people if they have folks who they believe are qualified for these positions to please apply. We will take resumes anytime on a rolling basis, happy to provide your office and everyone, every councilmember's office with the qualifications for that position. We are very actively recruiting.
How large is the class of inspectors that's starting next week?
Fifteen.
Fifteen. So, am I remembering the numbers correctly? We only had about two-hundred-and-fifty inspectors back in more or less March?
We had about two-hundred-and-forty at the hearing before. And as, as quickly as we bring people on, because I believe we've brought on about sixty people, we've lost people in that same time period to keep us where we are today. So we are, again, actively doing what we can to not only recruit but to retain staff.
So it's accurate to say that in the last nine months, we've only gained about twenty inspectors?
That's correct.
Based on the realities of hiring, including the application process, by when do you think we'll get closer to three to four, or four-hundred inspectors?
Thank you, Councilmembers. So let me also say that at the same time, we are working with D-CAS to talk about the job, the qualifications, to figure out an easier way to make sure that we can recruit qualified candidates. We've done- We've done some outreach to other city agencies as well, who are looking to pair people with positions, and I think this continues to ramp up and ramp up. And we're, you know, we're hoping to continue to make progress, whether it's slow or not, but to also continue to retain people. And as we bring people in, to offer the types of opportunities at HPD for advancement that will keep people with us. We did have, over the years, we have towards sort of a, an older workforce, and so retirements are amongst those people who we have lost, and I think we're getting to a place where we're going to see those numbers start to decline as well.
How long did it take to hire an inspector from the moment they applied to the moment they're hired, generally?
I, unfortunately, Assistant Commissioner Robinson is my expert on personnel, and she was unable to be here today, but we can try and come up with some information for you on that specifically.
Do you have a very rough number, let's say, three months, six months, nine months?
Yeah, we, we have pre-approval for these positions from the Office of Management and Budget, again, a partner in helping us to move people quickly through the process. So it is really about, once we do the interview, making very quick selections on, on who we want to hire. It's a relatively quick process to send that through our agency and over for approval. And then, of course, there's the process of onboarding and giving them time to, you know, leave their old jobs and come to us. So I think we have done a, a fair job at streamlining that process.
Thank you, Chair. If I could just squeeze in one final question. How many inspectors do you need in order to properly enforce all of our housing laws, in your opinion?
I think that the number that we're budgeted for right now will take us most of the way there, and I think once we're there, we have to assess what more we might need. I think it's hard for me to say at this point that we would need more because I, I can't tell you what, where that will get me, and things will change between now and then, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Commissioner, just following Councilmember Felice's thread, on, on these hires, one thing that I've anecdotally heard from former HPD staff who have moved on is the difficulty with the, with the agency's remote policies and not having flexibility with their families, not having flexibility in general, and pay has also been, been something that I hear a lot about. What changes has HPD been able to make to positions to make them more attractive? I'm allowing you to make a PSA.
Thank you for that, Councilmember.